Oh, I didn't know all that.
I just heard her husband said, well, uh, it's, uh, she said, you know, like, I said, that. Have you seen Brian? And she says, um, well, Brian's friends and family, so I didn't know. And I know that's great.
Call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge. I'm going to ask our new board members, Mr. Milkie and Alicia and Brian, you are new board member as well to lead the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, happy new year, welcome to our first board meeting of the year. Um, this is a really special board meeting in that, um, we have our new board members joining us. We have Brian Sapanic returning and, um, we'll be swearing in these folks tonight. We have some presentations and some really good information from our superintendent. So with that, I am going to swear in our new board members. I'll, uh, ask Alicia to come up first.
Up to you.
Yes. There we go. All right, raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, Alicia Gardner.
Hi, Alicia Gardner.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
Do solemnly swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of member of the Board of Education.
Of member.
Of the office.
Of office, of the Board of Education.
Of Swartz Creek Community Schools.
Of Swartz Creek Community Schools.
Genesee County, Michigan.
Genesee County, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome. Thank you. Mr. Milkie.
I'll do the same thing she did, okay?
You just say ditto.
I tried to pick it up because I know when you're standing there, you're like.
You've been through this before. I'm a must look.
Okay, so I, Chuck Milkie.
I, Chuck Milkie.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of Michigan.
And that I faithfully discharge the duties.
That I faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of member of the Board of Education.
By member of the office of Board of Education.
Of Swartz Creek Community Schools.
Of Swartz Creek Community Schools.
Genesee County, Michigan.
Genesee County, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Welcome. All right, Mr. Sapanic. I know you've done this before.
I, Brian Sapanic.
I, Brian Sapanic.
I, Brian Sapanic.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of.
The office of member of the Board of Education.
The office of member of Board of Education.
Of Swartz Creek Community Schools.
Of Swartz Creek Community Schools.
Genesee County, Michigan.
Genesee County, Michigan.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you, everybody. All right, uh, we can now move forward with Mr. Minkin's update on awards, recognitions, and celebrations.
Well, thank you very much and, uh, welcome to our new board members. It's, uh, it's great to see everybody here and I'm excited for not only a great year, but a, a great tenure for those of you that are joining us and, and I think that, um, the two of you will fit really nicely and Brian too, but he's been here before, but the two of you will fit really nicely into the team. Um, so I'm excited to, uh, to honor a couple of things, um, today, but I wanted to show you a video for my first celebration and it's about a two-minute video. It's actually a news clip from ABC 12 and this is one of our students who is engaged in the positivity project at Morris Elementary School and, uh, just the power of what she can do, so watch this.
Well, your Christmas tree is probably back in stores by now, the cookies all eaten up.
That's right, but one Michigan eight-year-old is still sharing Christmas spirit as Anne Paquette shows us. She's lending a helping hand to those in need.
All of this started with one Christmas wish written on eight-year-old Gabriella Adams' Christmas list.
I just thought of like, oh, I just wanna do something for homeless people that are less fortunate than me.
Gabriella tells me she woke up Christmas morning to a special present under the tree.
I was like, oh my gosh.
And I'm like, well, let's open it up. So we opened it up and there's this letter from Santa saying how proud he is that she's thinking of others.
Inside, items like these.
Bandages and deodorant.
And instructions on how to make a blessing bag. Then, a few days after Christmas, Gabriella and her family went to visit their neighbor and she told him about her special gift.
And he hands her this crisp $100 bill and he says, "And where would take your shopping? How many blessing bags do you want to make?" And she said, "20."
So that's exactly what they did. The two spent a few hours shopping, eventually stuffing these now 20 blessing bags.
It just made me feel amazing and really cool and like awesome about myself because I was helping other people.
The Swartz Creek second grader says her mom's community service work and her school's positivity project inspired her to help.
I think like I'll do it next winter and the next winter 'cause I want to help other people and I just wanna make sure everybody's okay.
A lesson her mom is grateful she's learning inside the classroom.
You can do little things that mean a lot to some of whom it might be a big thing to them and you can do something at any age, in any capacity, and make a difference.
I'm proud of myself and I want to be learning more.
So that's, uh, just an awesome opportunity to see one of our students, um, who on her own took it upon herself to do that. So I had the chance to go visit with Gabriella this past week and it was pretty neat to see her passion for community service. Um, she's not the only one. We had two fifth-grade students who organized a pajama day at Elms Road Elementary School, uh, to buy items like games and snacks and, uh, essentials for a U.S. Coast Guard ship that was just deployed. The students raised about $400 and collected almost 300 letters and cards to give to the people on the ship. It was completely their idea, they did all the work themselves, and they got to present on Leaders Live, the student news show, uh, to talk about, uh, their project. So just to highlight two examples of many, we could talk about a lot of them, of our kids that are really doing incredible things in our community and even beyond. So, uh, there's a lot of things to be proud of, uh, for being a part of this, uh, great school district. Um, I also wanted to recognize there are 46 Swartz Creek High School varsity athletes who received the, uh, Metro League Scholar Athlete Award for maintaining a 3.5 GPA while competing in the following Dragon Teams. Um, they've been selected by their opponents for showing the league's best sportsmanship, um, in, in all of our fall sports. Fourteen student athletes were also named All-League as well as Scholar Athletes. So I wanna name their names of the fourteen student athletes. Uh, volleyball, we had Madison Travis. In golf, we had Neely Peterson. Soccer, we had Stefan Hembrook, Cameron Crayer and Bra- and Brady Taylor. In girls' cross-country, we had Sarah Cook, Darby Johnson. In boys' cross-country, we had Cameron Smith. In football, we had Carson Gardner, Andrew Hetherton, and Edward Paulson. In girls' swim and dive, we had Caitlin Croyer, Isabella Linave, and Corinne Shather. And so I think two of those kids are represented here tonight, so, um, very, very impressive. Three of those kids on this side of the table are represented, their parents are here tonight. So, uh, very, very strong season for a lot of our forest fall sports team, but, um, always remember that, uh, that, um, academics come first and so it's great to see our kids that are excelling in the field or in the court, but are also, um, getting it done in the classroom. So that's all very exciting news, so a great way to start the year and hopefully it's an omen for a good 2019. That's all I have.
Any questions for Ben?
What, what, what elementary school does the little girl come from that did this, uh, carebag package?
Morris Elementary School. Yep.
I just didn't catch it, thank you.
Yeah.
That's fantastic and I, I just wanna comment that it was nice to see it in the, um, Dragon Amendment as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
That was really awesome. Okay, so moving on, we have a consent agenda, um, and on it are the meeting minutes from our last meeting, the approval of our agenda for tonight, and the resignations or retirements. Um, I would entertain a motion for, to approve the consent agenda. So.
So, or.
Jessica, Tony, any comments or questions?
I, I do, uh, the minutes themselves.
Yes.
Second page, uh, near the end, like second paragraph. It, uh, is shouting out to the people that serve and it said Tony Paul, not Tony Jones. The people that were leaving, exiting, just the minors.
Good catch.
Okay.
To make the adjustments.
With the amendment, does your motion stand?
Yes.
Okay, hearing no other discussion, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, back to you, Ben.
Okay, so I have a couple items to update you on. Um, we've been spending a lot of time, uh, in terms of the bond, dealing with our bond counsel, um, which is Tru'n Law Firm. But we've also been spending, Chris and I, a lot of time dealing with the bond underwriter. And so what that basically means is, over the course of the last month and into the next month, we're dealing with our financial institutions to try and get the $48 million, right? So they don't just write us a check the day after the election, there's actually investors who have to come in and purchase these bonds. So, um, in February, the bond closing date occurs and we're looking, hopefully, the, it looks like they're telling us March 5th will be when we actually take the proceeds in from the, from the bond. Once we take the proceeds in, that's when we deal with Umba, who's the investment agent, and they take that money and they s- they have a secured governmental, secure custodial account so that they're securing those funds and then they actually issue us the funds on a draw schedule as we have to pay bills for the contractors, the architect fees, and those types of things. Um, and so it doesn't sound like it should be very complex, it's extremely complex. There's a lot of resolutions that have to go before the state and so on and so forth. So we've been doing a lot of that work. Um, at our next board meeting, we'll have a few things that I'll prep you on ahead of time that we'll have to approve. I'll talk about a couple of things, uh, tonight, but the bond, uh, process is progressing. We had a steering committee meeting today. Um, Brian and Tony and Mike are all on that committee, includes the architects, it also includes the construction managers. Um, we reviewed what is likely to be the first bid package, um, which is the secure entries for Deek, Morris, and Elms Road Elementary Schools. Um, obviously, there's a lot of nuances with that, but you'll actually be able to have, hopefully, in February, an opportunity to approve our first package of, uh, bids. And those, of course, are competitively bid, there's a sealed bid process, there's a bid opening process, and, and we can certainly, uh, e- expand on, on explaining that more, but essentially, we put out a package that includes detailed prints and plans and then you have contractors who are saying, "With all of those specifications, I'm gonna put my, my bid in at this price." We gather those, it's all sealed, you don't, it's not an open kind of dialogue, it's a sealed bid and then there's a bid opening. Um, our construction managers then go through and they interview these folks and the different contractors that are the low bidders and they determine their capacity to do the work and then there'll be an opportunity for the board to determine who they ultimately are going to decide to go with on those projects. There'll be a recommendation, but ultimately, the decision is up to the board. So, um, I'll be providing you some guidance along the way on how to get through that process. Um, but it will become a regular and a pretty normal part of business here in Creek as we have construction that's scheduled to go on for the next three years. Um, wanted to talk about a legislative update. We had, um, a few bills that happened in lame duck. Um, as you are aware, lame duck at the end of the year is a time where legislators try and push through whatever they can when they're term limited. Um, some things are good, some things are not good, depending on which side of the aisle you might be sitting on, but regardless of that, uh, there are a lot of legislative things that impact schools. Um, two in particular, uh, made it through lame duck, several did not. Um, one of them, which is gonna be something that we'll have some more presentations on, is the school accountability system. So I think everybody believes that accountability is a good thing. Um, I think the methodology for which it's carried out is oftentimes problematic, but we have gone in this state from a letter system to a number system to a color system to a word system and now we're back to A to F system and they change it literally every year and so it's basically how they're going to grade out and score schools. Um, so the problem with them changing it all the time is that I'm not sure that the average citizen or community member is looking at that overly seriously because they change it every year and how the metrics are compiled. Uh, we're heavily involved in, we have to comply with the law and so we'll be looking at what does this legislation mean for us, um, and we'll have some conversations around that. Um, that'll be something that'll be rolling out over the course of the year. Um, also, one thing that impacts schools is for teacher and principal and administrator evaluation, um, the student growth percentage of their evaluation was 25%. It rolled up this year to 40% and there was a bill that was slated to bring that back to 25% and it stayed at 40%, didn't make it through. So 40% is in fact the percentage that will be used, not just for teacher evaluation, but for my evaluation, for principal's evaluation, um, for anyone who's overseeing an educational program. So that's, uh, that's another bill that impacted that. Um, a couple other, uh, just topics that we had talked about before at our, um, our last board meeting, we, um, we are in the midst of having some conversations about the cage. Um, I have, uh, had an opportunity to meet with the owners of the cage sports, uh, program, cage sports club, and, uh, just to hear their intentions, of course, they would like to continue. Um, and I had a very nice meeting, uh, with, with the gentleman, Mr. Weber, and, uh, I think his intention is to continue and he would like to try and move quickly to try and see if we can come to some resolution on a contract. Um, so at our next board meeting on January 30th, if that's the approved date, if we don't go on January 30th, our next board meeting, uh, we'll have to discuss and give me some general, uh, guidance on how to proceed in that. Um, he did offer to, uh, provide us with the Form 990, which is the tax return for the organization. I'm just gonna pass these out so that everybody has one. Um, and there you go. And so you can review that in advance of our conversation at our next board meeting. Um, is something that, uh, we'll definitely wanna be discussing. I also wanna talk a little bit about the fact, some of you, um, I know have them, for some of you, they're new to you, but there is a Chromebook, uh, that is a, is a, is a board-issued Chromebook. The purpose of that primarily is for accessing our new board policy system. So Joanne, um, and Travis can help get you specked up on how to do this. Um, they will work with you on the phone if necessary. Travis has even offered in some cases to come out to your place and even work with you and get it, get it figured out. So, um, there is a little bit of, uh, training on how to, how to access it, but that is how Neola, who is our policy provider, that is how they are now pushing out policies. So it will save a lot of paper. Um, we are gonna go through one of the pa- the final paper copy packet tonight, but, um, just so that you're aware, that is where, uh, that is coming from. So, um, lots of, lots of exciting things going on around the district. Uh, Rod and I have been going around to the building and we do, uh, as much as we can, I think I've told you this before, we spend about 30% of our time, if you look at a given week, um, in buildings. So we get into every building, um, if we're not in a building every couple of weeks, there's usually been a problem or a crisis or something like that. So, um, we get into the buildings quite a bit, we like to, you know, work with the staff, hear from the teachers, how are things going? Um, we'd have been doing our mid-year update. I have started the conversations as I had in the last board meeting, getting some feedback on the early and upper elementary model for, um, elementary instruction. Um, getting some feedback on that. Uh, we're gonna be putting together some surveys for, uh, some different constituent groups and we're also gonna be scheduling some public meetings to talk about that so that we can get some input, um, but it'll be a topic of conversation over the next few board meetings. Um, as we get into that, for, um, Chuck and Alicia's benefit for, uh, this being the first time you may have heard of it, um, we're talking about the, we're looking and exploring the possibility of an early elementary and upper elementary model. And what that basically would mean would be that games would become more of a magnet school where, uh, you'd have opportunities to send students from anywhere in the district to some innovative programming that they're talking about out there. And then if you look at the other four elementary schools, if you think about a four on a dice, right, you've got two schools that are in the west, two schools that are in the east, two in the south, two in the north, however you wanted to split it up. And the idea would be if you had two, uh, K2 buildings and two 3-5 buildings, you have a lot of benefit from the standpoint of cost in particular, you have a tremendous cost efficiency savings. An example of that would be if I have 67 children at Deek Elementary School in third grade and I have 45 children in third grade at Cyrene Elementary School, both of those, uh, situations are totally different. So at Cyrene, if I have two teachers, what's 45 divided by two? I have a class of 23 and a class of 22, right? Where at Deek, I've got a class of 34 and a class of 33 and that might be a little too big, so I might have to add a teacher, which means that now I've spent another $100,000 and that's just money that's not always readily available. Well, if all four of those teachers were in the same building, now my class size becomes manageable for all four of them and everybody's happy. Um, so from an efficiency and balancing classes, there's a lot of benefit. Teacher collaboration, there's a lot of benefit to, instead of having just one partner, you have three or four. Um, and then I think even just the way that the buildings are programmed, there's a lot of benefit in terms of having an opportunity to, um, you know, say, this is a K2 building, we're gonna have special opportunities for the little ones that are different than the upper elementary students. And obviously, from a parent's perspective, there, the difference between a kindergarten and a fifth grader is just massive. The downside of it, of course, is that you're dealing with a, a different, additional transition. So for parents, there might be a frustration with the fact that, well, I've got a second grader in this building and I've got a fourth grader in this building and that means that I have another place to go, right? So that could be, that's one of the downsides of it. We do have those transitions all throughout the, the school district, but that would be one additional one. So, um, we're just starting to have conversations, we wanna get a lot of public input on this, um, but it's something that you should be thinking about and being aware of it, you know, we're having those conversations, um, before we, we bring that back to any formal conversation. That is all I have.
Is that it?
That's it, sorry.
So I probably should have mentioned this in the awards and recognitions category, but I just wanted to let everybody know, I know it's reflected in the minutes, but I just wanted to let everybody here and the public know that at our last board meeting, um, we did provide, uh, Ben with his performance evaluation and he was unanimously graded as highly effective, which is the highest you can be, so thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that very much.
You deserve that. All right, so going on, we have informational items, there are, um, a few folks that are in the non-certified staff that you can review, um, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. And then we have board discussion items, our, we have a presentation.
Yeah, so, um, one of the things that we talked a lot about, and certainly we've talked a lot about with the bond, is school safety. And while we can't share every nuanced detail and we shouldn't share every nuanced detail of our safety plans, um, we do have a tremendous team. So Kevin Claren, who's our middle school principal, Michelle Corbett, who is our Morris Elementary Principal, and Jeremy Pazala, who is our school liaison officer. These three individuals have been trained, um, as trainers, so they've not just been through Alice training, they've actually gone to additional training to be able to train people in the school safety protocol. So, um, they are actually traveling around, they are running our school safety drills and they are, um, training our staff on how to keep our children safe. So, uh, we thought it would be appropriate to let the board know a little bit about Alice, what they're doing, and then give you an opportunity to ask questions. Um, so I'll go ahead and turn it over to the three of you.
Great, thanks, Ben. Uh, up on the first slide there, as Ben said, uh, he assembled our team, uh, the ISD announced their training over the summer, uh, the two-day train, train the trainer, uh, particular program. We're very fortunate, the Alice Institute, Training Institute, sent one of their, uh, presenters directly or trainers directly from the institute to, uh, to run the program. Uh, it was predominantly law enforcement group that we're in, so it was very instructive and we were just the minority as the school administrators and things. It was also very competitive and I thought you guys would appreciate that as well as far as, uh, being, uh, effective and being safe in there. But in that two-day program, what was so special about that is that the, the instructor, he, he went through the original program or the program, the initial program that we use to instruct or have used to instruct all of our buildings thus far in our first round of training. Um, he reserved the rest of the time to go through those drills, debrief those drills, give the rationale for running those drills, and then allow us to construct our own. So by the end of the, uh, two-day program, we were like, okay, we know the safety protocol, we're ready to run these drills. Very powerful and that was very, very hands-on, very much hands-on. Um, the, uh, last bullet point I wanted to mo- remark on that, we, we did do an online assessment, wasn't too, too challenging because there was a tremendous amount of, of reinforcement, um, but, uh, there's also quite a few resources on there and Alice Training Institute updates those and so if there are anything that changes or they have anything to add, if there's any new research or rationale that's guiding into their decisions, that's all put into the online platform that they provide for the instructors and so that way we can stay up to date. So with this training, we know that this will help us, uh, you know, reinforce what was taught this past, uh, school year, the last semester, second semester, but also it's been able to help us revitalize Alice and Alice awareness with the, uh, with the teachers that we've met with thus far.
So as Kevin explained, we did a variety of scenarios and drills in our training. Um, that's what the predominant part of the training was. And the reason was is because Alice provides options beyond the traditional lockdown. Um, it assumes that every event is not the same, every violent critical incident is not gonna be the same. For example, you might have somebody trying to gain entry into the front of the building versus someone who's trying to gain entry into a classroom versus somebody who's already in the building. And depending on what's happening, you're gonna respond differently, you're not just gonna climb under a desk and hide and, and wait. And so, um, I think of it like sports, if you play basketball or football, what the defense does depends on what the offense is doing. And so we have options. Um, there's also a lot of research that, uh, we, that we learned in this training. The New York Police Department put out an active shooter, uh, publication and in that publication, it showed that Alice increases the odds of survival because about 95% of the time in these violent critical incidents, the shooter acts alone and about 72% of the time, they're using a handgun because it's easy to conceal. Um, also, in these violent critical incidents with Alice, it's a, it's a very proactive approach. Um, about 80% of the time, these incidents end because an aggressive act occurs. Um, either the shooter attempts suicide, um, the police arrive, but until that, it takes minutes for the police to arrive, so who's gonna be the first to respond? It's gonna be the staff. And so the staff have to have these options to respond aggressively. Um, there's also science behind Alice, um, the science of movement. We can interrupt the shooter's ability with movement, we can increase and buy, increase survival and buy some seconds. Some of us think we can multitask, I know, I'm a mom, I think I can multitask pretty good. You really can't, your brain can only focus on one thing at a time. And your brain goes through this cycle called an OODA loop whenever there's movement, so O-O-D-A, your ability to observe something, orient to it, decide what you're gonna do and then act on it. And every time something moves, your brain has to start that cycle again. So with that science of OODA loop behind Alice, um, and being more proactive, we can interrupt that shooter's ability to kill and we can save lives, we can buy seconds for people to escape. And Jeremy, Officer Pazala, is gonna explain some of those strategies and options.
Yeah.
As you can see here, it's, uh, like the first thing is enhance lockdown. Obviously, um, we're not getting rid of the traditional lockdown, we're just kinda, I guess Alice is enhancing it, which means as we went around teaching, I was asking the teachers, like, what are you doing in a regular lockdown? It's pretty much, they lock the door, all the kids go into one corner and that's obviously where we're not teaching anymore. It's all about, like Michelle said, survival and we're, uh, doing like barricades or putting anything you can in front of the doors, like that's in the classroom, the desks, the chairs. Uh, they show us how to, like, tie off the doors, they got, uh, handles with either extension cords, uh, belts, uh, even like ties, a teacher has a tie, can tie down the door and, you know, pull it shut and, um, obviously, if there's, all the kids are in one corner, it's just easy if the bad guy gets in to, you know what I mean, to have all the kids in the corner and it just do the scenarios, it's, it's, um, it's pretty interesting how, how that stuff works. And, um, the other part is that, uh, Alice is not fighting, but it's just kinda taking back control of the, uh, of the situation. It's obviously your choice if you wanna, you know, counter and stuff like that and it's, uh, age-appropriate with the elementary.
Yeah, so with countering, swarming is part of that. Usually the shooter is, uh, another high school student and so, um, the adults or the, the students could swarm that individual or counter throwing things at them to interrupt that OODA loop. We don't teach that to the elementary kids, that's- We don't teach that to the elementary kids, that swarming technique. You know, it's not fair. You've got usually a big person with a bunch of little people. So it's developmentally appropriate. Usually like eighth grade on down, Alice doesn't recommend you do the, the swarming, um, education with the little ones. But we do have some resources for the teachers. Um, some books are being purchased, some picture books, um, to, for teachers to read aloud to their kids, just like you would, you teach your kids how, what to do when there's a fire, what to do with stranger danger. So why not what to do when there's a violent critical incident? We have some books that are developmentally appropriate and some videos too, um, that Alice provides that we'll be sharing with the teachers so they can show those to their students and, and talk about that safety.
And obviously evacuation is the, the best choice in the whole Alice thing. Obviously, if you can evacuate, get away from the, the dangers, the best option. And obviously that comes, I guess, with, you know, good information. Obviously, if the bad guy is at one end of the building and your class is at the other end, if you can go through the windows and go to a, you know, a safety place, it's obviously the best thing that they want you to do is evacuate and get away from the, fire away from the dangers as possible. I think the schools are gonna talk about having like rally points where, where the, if the kids do go out, there's gonna be like a certain area where they can all kinda join together so everybody knows where they're at.
All right, on this last slide, you'll see what our, our current state of our, our staff training plan is. Round one was just completed. We've, uh, gone to all of the different, uh, uh, schools, including the Little Dragon Center, to be able to go over the Alice training. And much of it was review, but it was a, it was a nice way to enhance that because we were able to bring in visuals, we were able to do some live demonstrations with the staff and also some opportunities for some questions. And so it was very helpful for those teachers that said, oh, that, I didn't understand that last time. Or we have new staff that have come in and say, oh, I'm glad I was able to pick this up. So that, that was very encouraging. Um, and round two, that's coming up. We're setting, uh, we're meeting actually on Friday and we're gonna put a proposal to Ben as far as our schedule for doing those last three rounds. Round two, um, we, we had some, um, some staff getting hurt. We did, I think, an active shooter training drill, uh, a few years ago, I believe. And we had some staff hurt. And so I know when going around to some of the buildings, some of the principals expressed concern over safety and things. And so in round two, one of the biggest push, the biggest push there is to make sure that we're using the Alice Training Institute's safety protocol and make sure that we're living by that and stressing that with teachers so they can focus on the drill and the learning that's taking place during the drill rather than fretting out or having anxiety over their personal safety. Uh, but that first drill will be used to reinforce the, the, um, enhanced lockdown and the whole science behind Alice. In round three, then we'll start using those counter, or those measures rather, like counter, evacuate, enhance lockdown, and let the teachers use that range of drills. And so now we're really deepening our understanding of, uh, Alice strategies. And that last one is probably the one that's gonna take the most amount of time planning. And that is, how do we, uh, teach the students at the high school? As, um, Michelle had said a moment ago, it's developmentally appropriate for high school kids. Generally, Alice accepts the fact that high school students probably are gonna be larger or at least in that category that they might be able to, with a group of them, take down a student if necessary. There are various case studies where that has happened successfully, whether it's a teacher, teacher and students, students, um, uh, they've been able to, to use that successfully. But at the same time, those students are empowered, especially when they're older, they're more apt to make more decisions. The campus is larger, uh, and things. We need to do one where we involve the, the students at the high school. And so that is the one that we're going to have to work on. That will be the, the latter part of spring, I think, because of the, the added logistics that we have to consider for that. So, uh, the other people that's had on there is, um, as we're going through these various rounds, this is going to force us to rethink, um, the different, uh, safety procedure calls that we make. And, you know, like calling just the lockdown wouldn't be appropriate. Now it's something to the effect of initiate Alice because now you have the whole range of strategies as opposed to saying, you're just going to do this. You're just going to go into lockdown mode, shut the lights, be quiet and wait and wait till law enforcement, uh, comes to assist you. And so we know we have revision of all those policies as we go through this, uh, staff training, um, plan here, so. What questions can we entertain?
I know that when, uh, we did the facility study, that Officer Pazala had input on the security end of it, correct?
Uh, so it would have been, uh, semantic, or not semantic, uh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Ken was involved.
Yes.
Okay, now we got Jeremy. I'm wondering, and we had a lot of discussion today about the security entrances, uh, at the steering committee.
Yeah.
I wonder if before our next meeting, has Jeremy seen any of them planned? Could we go over those with him?
We've, uh, just shown him in concept, but I think it might be a good idea to bring him in and get a little bit more input.
I know he doesn't have much to do. I, I think it would be a real good idea.
That's a good idea. Yep.
Brian, you have a question?
Yeah, I, I was gonna ask, these drills, uh, round two, three and four, are these intended to roll out this, uh, this next year? I mean, are they gonna be active shooter drills?
Yes, within the next few weeks.
Oh, in the next couple of weeks?
The interesting thing though in it is they actually are, they're, they're scripted in terms of what it is that we're trying to, uh, evince out of the, the staff. We're challenging, and so we'll limit them as to certain things they can and cannot do so we can focus on an aspect of Alice. And so it's all set up in, in tight sequence as we roll that out. And so we'd love to be able to get back with you, but it's also like, we don't wanna compromise what we're gonna do.
Well, are we gonna have, are we gonna have other outside agencies coming into play?
We talked about that with some of these. Yes, uh, the Grand Lake Township Police Department, uh, Jeremy has a good connection with and they've run some of these. So, um, we're communicating with them and touching base with them. But the three of us meet Friday afternoon to kinda nail this down and come to Ben with a proposal. But we do have that resource.
I was thinking local because it'd be the local ones. I, I know Grand Lake Township would respond if we did have a situation.
So Brian, yeah, we, I just actually, uh, had a conversation with the superintendent. Grand Blank is heavily involved in the training. And so they're actually gonna send a couple of their officers out to help us when we do, like the student training where we need more experts who are certified trainers. Um, and so that's gonna be a good opportunity to have, to work with them. Uh, every local agency has representatives who have been sent and are trained in the Alice protocol. So the county sheriff has been very involved with this as well as the liaison officers from G I S D. The metro police have been very involved with it. So part of the benefit of this protocol is that we're systematizing this across the county. So if you're a law enforcement officer in Genesee County and for that matter, most places in the state of Michigan for that matter, you're gonna be looking at going to responding to a scene and most likely the staff has been trained in this protocol. So we're a little bit ahead of the curve in terms of where some people are at in the training. We tried to fast-track it, um, 'cause we actually started last year. Um, but now we're going back through and giving a real solid reintroduction to it. But to your point, yes, there are a lot of officers that have been involved with this, understand the layouts, we've shared building maps and those types of things so that those things are in place.
Mr. Serpantic, one of the things that's an improvement over these is when we did those active shooter training drills, you had people going to other buildings. It was quite a production. And, and then you'd see like SWAT units or other groups. And so we spent, I think, three hours when I, when I, I remember when I went up to the high school years ago and, and things. And, um, they shot me, uh, in the incident within the first ten seconds and I sat there with a tie wrapped, indicating I was dead for the next hour. And, and, and so the, the opportunity to learning was somewhat diminished. And in these situations, we're working with much smaller groups, the drill duration's much shorter. We'll bring in those other people to help, to help with the debrief 'cause that's where it's valuable. But the duration of the drills that we did during training, I wanna say none of those drills probably lasted more than four minutes.
I was gonna say four minutes.
Which is about the time these critical violent incidents last. But the whole idea is then it gets us out back into the classroom and debriefing what we, what we could have done better or improvements.
What should have been different, you know, that's where the learning occurs.
So, so those drills are all taking place with the staff in their own building?
On location, in their own environment.
Yeah, which is good.
Does Alice say anything about, um, mental health professionals being involved or will you say any? Like, I, I went to the M A S B conference this year and I can't tell you what school district it was here in the state where they did some actor, active shooter, um, drills and scenarios where they actually used, I, I remember the gentleman saying the drama club and they did it like on a Saturday. And they said after the fact, there were quite a few students that were, were just in tears and very upset about it. They were, they didn't realize there was some of the, the processing that needed to happen with that. I'm just curious whether or not that had come up at all when you're doing the drills to process.
In the safety, in the safety protocol, there's some opt-out. The, the student one, that's where we're going, like I said, we've gotta do quite a bit of research to find out what some of the other districts had done. 'Cause once you involve the students, that's a whole nother layer of considerations. So we know with the staff to get started because we know there's some folks that were injured or they're a little bit anxious about that. There's some opportunities to opt-out, to become observers where we then acclimatize them and then hopefully insert them into the drills.
I'm not saying that was ju- just the students, but everybody, they realized, they knew it was a drill, but they didn't realize that it affected them in such a way.
Yes, we've, we've been discussing that with Ben. Absolutely. Any other questions?
Just a comment, um, the, this is fantastic. I've actually been, I, I've received, um, training of sorts.
Hospital, have any cold sills?
Yeah, so, well, in our, I'm not in the hospital anymore, but even our center, um, we brought in Alice trainers to do. And it is very powerful if you've never done it yourself. Everybody that I work with will still comment that I swore because when the gun goes off, you just react, even though you know it's coming. Um, but, and, and being military, I'm a firm believer, you have to practice like it's real. So I, I do strongly, strongly believe that this is outstanding training. It's needed for everybody. Um, but to consider, obviously, once you get through your initial plan, then you've gotta have a follow-up plan 'cause it's gonna be something that has to be revisited routinely. And then, like you're saying, if you're gonna get to a point where you're training students, well, the next year you've got a new set of students that are now high schoolers. And then the next year you've got a whole nother set. Um, and your, your teachers transition and they move buildings. And so it's gonna be an ongoing thing that has to be revisited routinely.
You already talked about August, next August, when we get the new staff coming in. That's probably a half day to get them in there to, to do that, so.
And then if we're talking switching up our buildings and all that, I mean, there's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be something that has to be revised on a regular basis.
Yeah, we need it to be muscle memory.
Yeah, exactly. And that's when, you know, a lot of that anxiety also starts to go away when it starts to become a little bit more routine and, um, not something so foreign. So the more and more you practice, the more it becomes. You want, you wanna be able to do it as most of you. So thank you for what you're doing and keeping our kids safe.
Little opportunity to share.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it very much. Look forward to hearing updates. Now, what everybody has been waiting for, are Niola policy revisions. And as Ben says, this is the last time we're getting them out.
Yeah, so, um, we have a little bit of an interesting dynamic with this particular package. This is the largest package that Niola has put out. Um, as you can see, it's quite lengthy. Um, the nice thing about this though, uh, we, we actually slowed this down because we knew we were gonna have a new board starting in January. So the policy committee has actually already been through this. We've taken a look at, um, I've made some recommendations. Uh, this is considered officially the first read, but, um, we're not actually going to read this unless you decide you want to sit and read it. Um, this is a, this is actually, um, already been looked at by policy. At our next meeting, I'll come and I'll share the recommendations from the policy committee and we can go through it. Um, it gives you an opportunity to read it ahead of time um, so that you're prepared to ask questions about some of the different nuances. And then, um, our process, for those of you that are, uh, new, is that we get a packet like this and basically the white pages are the actual policies. Okay, those are the actual policies. The yellow pages represent the Cliff Notes version, right? So this is like the synopsis to tell you the summary of each policy and what it means. We are moving and transitioning, hence the Chromebooks, to a digital process of using, um, what is, what's called Board Notes for our Niola policies. So the next round will be a little different. So you're learning this right now and it's gonna be the only time you end up using that. Um, but our process nevertheless is we, we have a, have a board meeting. If there's any burning questions on it the first time you see it, you can ask them. But that's considered the first read. The next board meeting, the second read, we actually would have more discussion about it. If you had questions that came up after you read it, um, I'm, we'll share some of the recommendations that are coming out of the policy committee. And then the third time that it's presented to the board is the final read and that would actually be the, the time at which we approve officially the policy. So think of it as you get three looks at it at a board meeting, if that makes sense. And so that's our process. We do have some times where a law will be passed or there's a, uh, there's a lawsuit that just changed something that we have to do. And we might need to fast-track a policy. We can have those conversations. But our, our preferred methodology and systematic process is first read, second read, final read with, with an approval. Anybody have any questions or?
I just have a, maybe a request. So for the folks that are new, um, could you talk about where the new language is bolded? Language that's been deleted is, is stripped out. And then we have various options throughout the, the various policies.
Yep, great point. So when you're reading through here, the strike-throughs are things that have been eliminated in the proposed policy. Niola, who is our policy vendor, they're the leading policy think tank in the country. They are the ones that actually provide, they have attorneys, they have many, many people on their staff who are writing these and vetting them through the legal counsel. When you see a recommended policy, um, oftentimes it's really not much of a choice, but sometimes you do have choices, you have decisions that you have to make. So, um, the bold are gonna be things that change for various reasons. So it might have been because of a federal statute, could have been because of a, a state statute. It could have just been because there was a incident that prompted a variety of other domino effects. And so, um, they put out these policies. Um, when you see a little box, it's, it's actually gonna look like the, the little square brackets. Usually what that means is that you're going to be picking options. You have option A, B, C, D. Technically, um, you can insert your own language as a board. As, as you know, the board's role is policy development. However, the recommendation of course is that as you add your own language to it, you have no ability to ensure that that's been vetted by legal counsel. So, um, obviously it's a conversation that can be had and sometimes there are some of those nuances. But this is an opportunity for you to, um, be able to see the existing things that have been crossed out, bold is added, brackets mean there are options. And one of the things that's a little bit challenging is that with these pages, if you go onto our website and actually now in the board docs, you'll be able to see our existing policies. We have already have some of these policies that are existing. So some of the options are already in place. And so you might want to know what those are as well. So I can talk about that more specifically in our next board meeting.
Any questions?
Why do they leave the brackets in then? I mean, if we change something, do they re-vet it? One of their attorneys and say, hey, listen, this is acceptable language or no, this is gonna get you in trouble?
Yeah, so.
Is that, is that the sword that's?
That's a great question. So they would, um, vet it if we were to say, hey, you gave us these two options. We really want the language to be this, which is totally new and kind of organic if you guys developed it.
If it fits us, yeah.
If it, yeah, right. So they would then, um, take whatever we give them. But they make no guarantees that if we have a lawsuit that we, that would pass muster. So if we were wanting to do something like that, which you have the power to do, we would want to probably have our own legal counsel at least look at it and say, that would be acceptable if you wanted to go in that direction.
I'm sure that's not gonna be a problem with I just asked because of the brackets.
Absolutely.
Thank you. It was good. I was curious about the striking out in the bold print and I wondered about that.
Yeah, sure.
How oft, so, um, obviously I understand the policies that need to be revised. Um, if we have standing policies, are they reviewed on a certain schedule to, like, revise this year? Even if there were no changes, are they reviewed routinely? Or do they stand until there needs to be a change?
So I would like to say yes, but here's the reality. The policies that come before us, these packets, they touch so many of them and because there's so much activity, they're coming at us constantly. Um, so what ends up inevitably happening is that if there's a policy that's needed to be changed, so for example, we had, um, Mike and I worked on a situation where we had, from the audit, the auditors were rec- The auditors were recommending that we had a different threshold for how we were categorizing something in our policy. So it came as, we really need to fix this. And so now it became, okay, we need to look at this. Can we agree that this is okay? And then we vote on it. So sometimes there are things that come about because we realize this policy needs to be reviewed. In a perfect world where you're having a few laws that change every year, you would have more of a systemized process. But we're literally having probably seventy to eighty policies every year that get changed. And so we're constantly reacting to those things. So, and if there's a policy that all of a sudden becomes outdated, they initiate that as a new review. So if we have a policy that's been a standing policy, that's no longer valid. They're going to put it in this update and say, this law changed and you need to change the policy from what you have. So by its very nature, we end up going through and reviewing the pertinent policies. At any point, we could say, we want to look at uh, the, the finances section or the, it, the personnel section. Or whatever it is we want to look at. And we could take that through a policy review. So it's, it's happened over the last five years probably that because schools have been given so many new mandates through the government. That we have to constantly take packets like this on a, every quarter and go through. So yes, in a perfect world, you would do that, but it happens to be that by default, you end up going through your policies. Because you can't have anything that gets outdated because they're, they're hitting you with it.
Well, and I ask that, I, I'm um, volunteering in a role where I needed to pull some forms utilized by the school district. And I was kind of shocked that the bottom, like they were referencing Neola and the dates were like two thousand and one, ninety-nine. And I'm like, are they really that, like, it's been that long since it's been reviewed or revised? And it may be that it still is standing invalid, but that's where my question kind of stems. Or is it where policies are getting reviewed and revised? But then the trickle down to fixing forms, changing forms, uploading forms, all of that. Ends up that that doesn't get done to match with the actual policy.
Yeah, it's int- that's a good point. Uh, one of the things we want to do is probably at the policy committee, depending on who's on that committee. We want to have that conversation. Maybe we, maybe we'd like to take an exhaustive look at a certain section. To do it well, it would be impossible to take all of them, but you could say, let's take a, forms maybe, let's take a look at forms. And let's address that. Make sure that everything is lined up and matching. We can, uh, part of our, part of our uh, fee that we pay to Neola on a yearly basis. They could actually send a representative out if we were to do a board workshop. And have them come out and say, here's kind of our analysis of where you're at and maybe where you have some gaps. So that might, I mean, that might be valid, a worthy thing to do too.
And, and a few years ago, we did actually take all of our policies and split them up and went through them. And I think in that process, we identified some opportunities. I mean, as, as minor as typos or grammatical. And as major as it wasn't the right form, or it wasn't something that, that should be in there anymore. So, but I think you're right, there are some that are, that'll, they just haven't had significant changes.
Changes to.
But we did go through the process, but it's constantly evolving. So the policy.
Yeah, well, and my, my thought would be, even if it didn't need any revision, at least it should be dated in, you know, somewhere staying, you know, reviewed at a date. And that it is, you know, still valid at a certain point. I just wondered if there was a timeline that that was expected. Or, or if logistically and feasibly, it is just, you do what you can when you get them.
Well, you know, we can do it any way you guys want to do it. So, you know, that'd be a good task for the policy committee to, to tackle.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I think you did.
Writing it down, right now. All right. Ben, you had some information on a partnership with the city and CRIM?
Yeah, so this is uh, just for conversation so that you can ask questions. I've been trying to do as much as I can to develop partnerships with uh, other municipalities. We've had a great relationship with the city. Adam, Zettel and I have been meeting about some, some, some problematic situations with our students who walk to school. So we have kids that walk to uh, the middle school in particular. They also walk to Cyrene. We have some walkers in most every school that we have. But the city schools, so the high school, Elms, middle school and Cyrene. They um, we're going to omit the high school uh, because they don't have a large walking population. But for the walkers that are there for those three, other three buildings, we have a grant opportunity. And it's about a six hundred thousand dollar grant. And what that would mean for us, we would have to commit um, to split the um, the implementation bill. Which is about a forty-five thousand dollar bill. We would split that with um, Sword Creek City. And they would be the underwriter on the grant. And the CRIM Foundation would actually do the legwork to help us get it done. What it would do is it would create a walking pedestrian bridge on the uh, school property over by um, Crepo Street. Where kids walk across, especially in the winter when we get heavy snow, it's difficult because they don't have a, a safe route to walk uh, back in there. There's a path over at Elms Road where there's a subdivision actually behind Elms Road. Where kids are walking through and sometimes it gets very soggy, a, a field for lack of a better word. And so creating a walking path there. And so the, the grant is called a safe routes to school grant. And it's really designed for this. So for about twenty-four thousand dollars, we get about six hundred thousand dollars of investment in our community. For upgrading our infrastructure to make sure that kids have safe passageways to school. So it's a great opportunity. I just want to make sure I present it to you because at the next board meeting, I might be coming and asking you, hey, we need to approve this. Or I'm asking for this to be approved. And I want you to just be thinking about that partnership, um, you know, before we get to that point. So I don't know if there's any initial questions. I, I can give you preliminary.
Who's deciding what's needed?
So the CRIM Foundation, um, obviously well-known throughout Genesee County. They've done a lot of uh, background work on what, you know, they actually have traffic studies and things like that. And they'll say, okay, you have this high of a population of, of walkers and you have them walking across this busy area. So they might say, it's time to put a crosswalk in here with a flashing yellow light with a button that allows them to go across. You know, those are the types of things that the grant funds. So the CRIM Foundation, they have two people that are looking, that are grant writers that look for these types of opportunities in Genesee County. Adam approached them and said, would you be willing to help us get this passed? And right now they have a hundred percent pass rate on their, on their application. So we don't have the in- infrastructure of grant writers to be able to go out and do that. It's, it's a process. So they're going to actually help us do that. But the implementation fee to not only have them write the grant, make that happen. Pay for the due diligence period, all the stuff that occurs, it's about forty to forty-five thousand dollars. So we would have to agree, if we were to agree to move forward, we would have to agree to the resolution and split that cost with the city.
But the city decides kind of what's needed in what spot that makes the most sense?
Well, no, we get, we get a lot of say in that. So the city has a big part of that. But then we, there's an educational component, right? So um, they're, they, the CRIM Foundation is talking about, maybe we could do something on the creek. Where we have like a little area where kids can go do water testing and things like that. They're trying to make the city and the kids that are walkers, they're wanting to make the whole area more pedestrian friendly, right? So they add all these other components into it. So we would have quite a bit of say in how that would roll out.
So who would be responsible for the liability? You have the use and the maintenance. For example, if it's a sidewalk, who's required to put the salt down or make sure that the, the walkway is cleared and?
It's going to be a shared issue. So the city is going to take anything that goes offside our property. And they will probably help, you know, things that come onto our property. But where the sidewalks intersect with our property, it would be in a, it would be something that we would have to maintain, which is what we, you know, do currently. But if it's a city, it's going to be in the city, they're going to be responsible for maintaining it the way that they do their other sidewalks and things like that.
Who owns that common property there behind that subdivision in Elms Road School?
That's a good question.
Is that Nema property? Cause he owned most of that.
It might be, it might be. So that's a really, really good question. But there is a public um, easement that runs through there.
I think there was. I was on the city council so back then, yeah, and I think there was.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm not exactly sure of the exact location, but I know there's.
It's lost things in the banks and this and that. So I just wondered if there'd be any cost for us on that.
Yeah, well, for us, our, our fixed fee that we would be obligated for is to split the forty thousand. And then the grant would cover whatever.
But we're going to get a good look at it to see how much we're actually benefiting from it and then what the city's getting for it.
Yeah.
Because I'm sure the city's not doing it just to be nice. They're getting a lot of walkways probably to benefit the city.
Yeah, there's a, there's definitely a mutual benefit. So.
Right, right, right. It's good. That's perfect. Thank you.
Are these pathways, they're large enough to be cycling paths, right? Or are they going to be the size of a sidewalk, do you know?
Well, you would know more about that than I do.
Well, I know that, I was excited.
I figured you could ride a bike on a path this wide.
You can, yes, yes. You can do it on that.
Not if there's permission there though.
Well, some of us can, but yeah, yeah.
So I, I don't know the answer.
I didn't know if CRIM had talked about that because I know in some of what they've done in other areas um, for their safe routes to school. It is, as you said, the sidewalks, crosswalks, curb openings, and they've done a lot as far as the bike paths as well. Um, just on the roadways. But um, anyway, I just want to say that um, you know, this already in some of your name. That I'm excited by that for the mobility, whether or not it's walkers and or cyclists. You know, we're out in the rural area and I would have loved nothing more than for our kids to be able to ride their bike to school. But since we don't have the bike paths out there and CRIM is fully aware, I'm excited about that. But I, I think it's wonderful if we can offer that and a safer route for kids to be able to walk or, or ride to school.
Yes.
It's a big deal.
Yes, it will. Yeah, that's right. Uh, we will have a um, we will have a, a document. So once I get the document for your review, uh, I'll have it in your next board packet before we do anything.
Will it have any detailed sketches, Ben, or anything that the proposal?
I would hope so.
Yeah, just, just so we know. If we don't vote on something, then it ends up being something that.
Correct.
How?
That's all I ask.
What's the timeline? Do you know how long the grant is and when they think that they would implement?
It's probably um, a couple of years. You know, they're going to go through, they're going to get the grant approved. And then they probably would start, you know, another year from now and then. These government projects usually don't go super fast, so.
So would that be on this year's budget or next year's? Would you anticipate?
Um, I would anticipate it on this year. So Chris is building that amendment. So that would have, we have to find a container if we were to approve it for that cost. So, yeah.
Or if it goes a year early, maybe we could split it. If we had to do it, it'd be twelve thousand, twelve thousand and that way maybe.
Less of a burden on the fiscal, for sure.
Sounds like a great opportunity. Remember, where students have a community?
Yeah, I think so.
I'm all for that. That's good for the kids.
Okay. All right. We have now a potential bond authorization for local inspectors.
So you'll probably notice what I'm doing tonight. I'm trying to front load you with information of what's coming. And I just know that these are going to be, I don't want to come to a board meeting and have you say, you're asking us to approve this and we never saw it, right? So I don't have anything to show you, but I have the concept to talk about. So one of the biggest frustrations we had with the Little Dragon Learning Center as well as the Virtual Learning Center. Is that the construction timeline took an inordinate amount of time. And part of the problem is because everything in a school has to go through the state of Michigan. So every time you do a plan review, every time you have to call an inspector, they're sending somebody out for Lansing. And that might be a three week time period that you're sitting there waiting and no construction can be done until you get an inspector from Lansing to come out. So another partnership with the city, um, it would also be a partnership with Monday Township, Gaines Township and um, Clayton Township. We have to, to meet with all the municipalities, but I wanted to get your temperature on this before I move it forward. I don't see any downside to it. I do see there being some logistical challenges. I've talked with our bond council about this and they think it could be very beneficial to us. The school district and each individual municipality can pass a resolution that would allow for the inspections to be done locally. And so what that would essentially mean is the plan review process, which is still pretty extensive, that has to go to the state still. But once the plan is approved for the bond projects, we're going to have the opportunity to call a local inspector to come and approve. So the local electrical inspector is coming to approve the work versus waiting three weeks for somebody who has the same credentials and certification. But is housed in Lansing. And that can speed our process, our projects up exponentially. So um, I'm a huge fan of it because I'm all about trying to get this done. And I believe that if we rely on Lansing every time we need an inspector, we've already witnessed the delay that it brings. So I wanted to get your initial temperature. It doesn't need to be a decision tonight. But I'm going to start engaging the other municipalities. Um, I've already talked to the city, which is going to be our biggest partner in this. But um, just want to make sure that you understand kind of what I'm trying to do is to speed this process up. So I think it could be a big advantage. Our attorneys feel the same. But I wanted to make sure um, you knew about it. So that if I'm asking you to approve a resolution next meeting or the meeting after, um, you're not surprised by it. So does anybody have any questions about that?
Can you talk about the fees?
So the fees are going to be relatively comparable. So for example, when you have an inspector come out, it's a, I think the state is a fifty dollar fee. It's pretty, pretty comparable here locally. It's going to be around the same. You might pay five dollars less at Monday Township versus Clayton Township. I mean, they all have different um, fees that they assess. And so we could be able to look at that, but it's within dollars. But those dollars are mitigated probably by the time it takes to get somebody out here from the state. So.
So the process is such that we approve if we choose to?
If you choose to.
And that would go to the different municipalities?
And then each municipality would have to approve that as well. So let's just say for whatever reason, Clayton Township or Monday Township or Gaines Township or whoever. If they were to say, we don't want anything to do with that, you just go through the state. Well, whatever school building is in that municipality would have to go through the state process. That would just have to be the way it rolled. So um, if they agreed, so if Monday Township, we have Moorish. We would use the Monday Township inspectors for the Moorish buildings. And obviously Gaines Township and, and is Gaines and then Deek is out in Clayton. So the rest of the schools are in the city, but um, for those three, we would have to utilize, um, each municipality would have to pass their own resolution.
On top of ours.
On top of ours, yes.
On top of ours. So all five municipalities would have to do it. And then let me ask you, if there's state grant money involved with the state building or something that's, you know, dictated by the state and we own it as a school district. Do they allow a local inspector to do that? If it's state money being used or something or?
Yeah, so that's a.
That was my only question.
Yeah, it's a good question. We, we, um, so back to the first part, not all five municipalities would have to agree. But anyone that we would partner with in that way would have to have a, a, what would be a companion resolution. So we would have to make a resolution and say, we're good with this. The city would have to make one. We could work with the city, even if none of the others agreed to it. We just would have to go through the state for theirs. But in terms of grant money, I'm not aware of any. But I do, I do know that um, the state loves to take in fees for inspections. So they um, they don't promote this, but they, there's nothing they can do about it. As a local authority, we have the ability to, to do that.
I'm surprised that any municipalities would do it because then they might absorb some of the liability.
Correct.
Something was done wrong and then we say, hey, listen, the foundation was built wrong on the porch that you added on. We would go back on the township, not on the state. That's going to be a problem.
And that's going to be for each municipality to.
They're insured. Because I, you know, if you, if, if they do something in Clayton or in Gaines and they said, Jesus, this three hundred thousand dollar project's all screwed up that we just did. The state would cover us. They're not going to and would have a, it, it's a potential, just an internal fight with the local inspector.
Yep.
Well, then my question back to what you were asking, I think, um, is there anything that requires the state at like the end of your project? To come in and like do a final inspection that can come back and say, well, we didn't approve it all the way along. And now you've got hit with some kind of fine or anything like that.
That's a good question.
I'm, I'm not a builder, so I don't, I don't know that process, but.
Project would be bonded.
So, yeah, so there's a couple of things. Number one, the fire inspector is always got to be approved by the state. So you could have a local guy do some of the intermediate ones, but the, the state has to come through to do a final on the fire. And there are a couple of others that are that way. But a lot of the trades, plumbing for example, um, doesn't require a, a final state. So it just kind of depends on what specific trade you're talking about.
I think we're both just kind of asking the, the liability at the, at the end, basically, are we? It sounds, it sounds and makes sense, but is. It sounds, it sounds and makes sense, but is there a potential down the road that it really could?
The liability for us is almost no. The liability to the municipalities is potentially there. If they were to approve something that was negligent in their, you know. But that's, that's the deal that every inspector has to deal with, they're always liable if they approve something that's not, you know, there.
If I may ask, I know I mentioned this before, but um, if we do these partnerships, is there the opportunity to have those municipalities and inspectors come in and the bid process and to look at our plans beforehand?
I'm sorry, what?
I'm sorry, I asked whether or not about having the municipalities and or the inspectors coming in during the, when we're formulating the bids and the plans on the front end, so we know that we're not running into something that has to be changed.
Yeah, so.
After construction or once construction has started.
Sure. So typically, what you're gonna have is you're gonna have the bid process and those packages are developed in concert with our construction managers who, their job is really to vet that, to make sure we're not gonna run into any issues. And the architects, who have to know every single code and every single, they have relationships with the inspector or the plan review guys at the state. Every project for the bond has to go to a plan review at the state. If the state is okaying it, it's going to be the highest threshold. So, by the time it gets to the local inspector, it, I don't wanna say it's gonna be watered down. People have already been vetted through the plan review process at the state. So they're not having to be the ones to do the initial, yeah, this project is approved by me. They don't have the authority to do that, it has to be, the plan review has to be done at the state level. They're just coming, what this really means is that they're coming in when we, whatever the contractor says, I can't move to my next phase until I get this approved.
I get that.
You know, so that, so.
We're not held hostage by the state's timeline.
Correct, yeah.
And I think that's the biggest benefit of all of this is that having a local inspector, I could call today and say, I need to suspect it. And, and they might say, well, I'll be there this evening, or I'll be there tomorrow.
Mm-hmm.
And take care of it, waive it.
Which is a benefit, yeah.
I mean, I, I think Chuck's concern that he mentioned is, is very, uh, that's people. I mean, I, I, I see the.
Well, you know, these inspectors come and go from townships and cities. And sometimes they pick the cheapest one or their buddy or their friend or, and I just don't wanna, I don't want anything like that to happen if we do. And I know what you're saying, it has to be approved by the state, they're doing a great job, the construction guy's doing a great job and the local building guy, yeah, it's all good. I made my fifty bucks today and, and, and then, I've seen it, just in, in my little bit of government. And then all of a sudden, we get something that breaks or cracks and now we're suing the town, I just, I don't know. I just, it's just a concern, I'm not.
Sure. Yeah.
So you'll bring that back?
I'll bring that back.
But I'm, I'm for it if it helps it and it's done right.
Yeah, I'll uh, provide you some documentation for our next meeting.
Thank you. Alright, next we have our calendar for the twenty nineteen Board of Education meeting dates.
Alright, so, um, I put a calendar out there in concept and I'll just, th- these are just for our regular meetings. Um, I'll give you a, a little bit of insight. Um, in January, we have, as you can see on the agenda tonight, a lot of business to attend to. So, having another meeting in January is usually necessary. In June, we have an important um, presentation of our final budget. We also have what's called Truth and Taxation in that month, and so it's important to have two meetings in June. Um, in August, we're usually hiring teachers at that time, trying to make sure all of our classrooms are filled. So having two meetings in August is also important. And in December, um, we usually do the superintendent evaluation, that last meeting in December. So that's really, the eighteenth is really for my evaluation. So, those are the months where we need to have a couple of meetings, the other months are not imperative. And um, you know, if we ever have to call a special meeting, we will. So, um, what's not represented here, which I think we'll need to kinda circle back to is board committee and officer discussion. So when we decide who is going to serve on the various committees, we would have to then decide what days and, and when we were gonna hold those committee meetings. But for the regular Board of Education calendar, part of our job tonight is to establish the calendar for twenty nineteen. So, um, you know, it's proposed there for you to look at. Um, you guys can discuss it, if you like the calendar as is, if you have dates that you wanna change around, um, that's fine, we can, it's malleable, so.
When is spring break?
Um.
Last week, March twenty-third.
March.
March twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
It's, well, yeah, starts that day through the following, thirty-first.
I'm fine with, I'm fine with the calendar the way it's presented here.
I'm good with it.
My only concern is that, it seemed like last year on the months where we had one meeting, those meetings went very long. That, I mean, that, that's my main concern.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, we can do it however you wanna do it, I mean.
So, like you said though, Ben, if we anticipate having a lot for our agendas, we could add a special meeting.
You could, yeah.
I'd be fine with that.
So, so, so let's just use April as an example. You anticipate that if we just do the seventeenth, we're gonna be here till midnight, you could say, we're just, could we do a, a meeting on the third?
Sure.
And, and kinda split it up.
Yeah.
It's more work on you and your team, but.
No, no, that's, that's totally fine.
I'm fine with that, that's.
Yeah.
Anybody else?
I'm good with this.
I, yeah, I personally am very good with this, um, and I'd rather have a long night once than. A couple multiples that end up being long anyway. Um, do you foresee though, especially right here at the beginning of this year, as we are going through all of this bond, um, stuff? That you're gonna need, um, more?
So what's gonna happen is, they're, yeah, they're, they're gonna take, uh, so pretty much in February, you're gonna see a bid package. That's gonna be our first bid package. You probably won't see the next one until May or June. So, they're getting ramped up. Now, in twenty twenty, probably every month, you're gonna see some sort of a bid package that you're gonna have to approve and look at. And so, that, they'll take this calendar and they'll build around when they get the contractors to do the bids. Um, what's not on here, uh, what I think is, which I think is worth mentioning to you. Um, I've reached out to M A S B because we did this, we've done this in the past. Um, they provide board workshops, right? And so they can come in and they can talk to us about uh, a myriad of topics. I think with having a new board, having a conversation about, um, you know, strategic planning, goal setting, those types of things. That would be a beneficial thing to us, that's not currently on the calendar. So, if uh, we hold a board workshop, we've held them during the day before, but for some people's schedules, that doesn't work. So, you know, we might have to add an evening meeting if we decide that we wanna do a board work session or workshop. A lot of the times that you have those work sessions, they're important because you can't work through in a regular board meeting, all that you need to work through. So, that might be a time where you wanna have, you know, something like that put on the calendar.
I'd like to, I'd like to mention to pay for the two new board members.
Oh, yes, yes.
This is a lesson and watch what you ask for, cause you might get it. We used to get twenty-five dollars a meeting. Last year, I suggested that we go to, well, we ended up fifteen hundred dollars. Because there's a lot of pa- paperwork to get paid for every meeting. So, now we just get fifteen hundred dollars in December. If we attend seventy-five percent of the regular meetings and the committee meetings. So, I see that as a big problem this year because there's gonna be a lot of meetings.
Well, it's seventy-five percent of the regular meetings or a committee that you volunteer for.
Right.
Right, so, so you're right, there, there's gonna be, you know, maybe you need to find a way to get a.
Not that fifteen hundred dollars is much money, but.
Right.
My wife kicks me because I brought that. She said, why'd you do that?
Yes.
But I just, I, I don't know if there were that.
Yeah, so you, so you get a, you get a fifteen hundred dollar check first.
I was here when you.
First Friday in December or something like that.
Yeah.
You know, I, I did not know that, I thought, I didn't think we got paid. You guys can split it up. That's an extra uh, two hundred and twenty-five bucks, good job, two thirty-three. Well, maybe you dropped a percentage down, Mike, if he's gonna increase the meetings by twenty percent or something, I don't know. Yes, that's all. It's, it's supposed to be one, one, once a month, right? The, this third Wednesday of every month, right?
Yeah, well, sometimes there's two according to this calendar.
Yeah.
And then the committee meetings that were assigned to, building inside or, or during the committee or something.
Yep. Yeah, I think in twenty twenty, those will probably be short meetings if you have the, the bid proposals down. And I'm sure nobody wants to be here for two hours for that. Hopefully, if they're chumped up, here's what we're doing at Deke, here's what we're doing at Siree, bam.
Yeah.
And hopefully after the first one, the rest will be much easier.
That's what we're hoping, that's what we're hoping.
Okay.
So, cause I, I really have a long meeting sometimes and have two or three these, but whatever works best.
So Tony, you're okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. We'll try to be efficient so you can get home to get some sleep, I understand.
Pass your bedtime.
Uh, not yet. I don't think we're gonna actually officially, well, yes, we are, we're gonna do that under on board action, we'll, we'll adopt this.
Yeah, the next, the next two things are really just discussions on, uh, well, so, starting with F. Um, we have four committees. So we have policy, we have finance, we have um, academic achievement. And we also have building in sight. And so those four committees have met at various times. Um, obviously, we have to try and see who wants to be on those committees. And if you're not officially voting for these, there is actually a process we have to follow in the action item for the election of officers. Okay, so typically, um, I'll just put this out there, that typically you have board members who have served uh, for different lengths of time that are usually in officer roles. That is a completely up to you as a board and, and so there is a board process where you go through. It might be beneficial to you as it was last year to kinda talk about, is there anybody that wants to seek the different offices? And then have a conversation about it, because that may then lead to, okay, is there anybody that's willing to chair the finance committee? Is there anybody that's willing to chair the building in site committee? And then that kinda feeds into the pieces. Under action items, you will actually formally have to, to follow the process of nomination, taking a roll call vote and filling the officer roles. But this is an opportunity like last year to have a conversation about it and see who wishes to seek those, those offices.
It's open for discussion.
Mike, you're smiling.
I think it goes by seniority, all you guys, you know what I mean?
And the offices are.
You guys keep doing it.
Vice President, Treasurer and Secretary. And then we have committee opportunities where you can either be part of the committee or chair.
I'd like to stay as a treasurer.
I second that. Is that okay?
There you go. This is the discussion right here, we're not.
We're not. We're having a discussion.
We're not nowadays.
We're having.
Do you wanna just jump right into the nomination?
So, so Brian.
We'll, we'll do that in action.
Yeah, I would just, uh, I would like to see status quo and uh, I know we're missing our secretary and I think Tony would make a great secretary.
Yes.
His writing is beautiful.
Can I just ask for clarification, only because, I mean, I know Joanne takes minutes, but what, what other duties fall to the secretary?
Many.
Okay.
The secretary is, they have a lot of things to sign and um, they're, they're the, usually the official signature of the board, so.
They have the counter signature of the president normally?
Yes.
Yeah, so all the minutes, a lot of the, the tax documents, um, with the bond?
Yep.
It may be, um, much more.
Unliable stuff.
You need a stamp.
Carrie does a, a nice job at graduation and I, I'd like to see her stay there for sure, I guess.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
So we have President, Secretary, Treasurer.
Yeah, so just for, just because I'm trying to help us through this, there is a formality. And so when we get to the board, election of officers, Carrie as the current president will go through and there's actually a nomination for each post.
Yeah.
Uh, so you have to do that officially, but we wanted to talk about that. So, what about committees? Are there people that are wanting to chair certain committees? I mean, Mike, as the treasurer, it makes logical sense that you stick with finance.
I was gonna nominate Mike for that.
Yeah. So we still have three other committees that I don't know.
Required.
Huh?
I mean, I would, I would think that the treasurer should have to do the finance.
It's pretty, yeah, be really unfortunate if he wasn't.
Well, because of the building in the bond, I also would like to stay on building inside.
Yeah.
So would I. I'd like to stay what I did last year too.
And so would I, building inside and policy.
You wanna start?
Did I say policy?
Yes.
You did, you just let it come.
I meant building inside. Yeah, building inside and policy.
I would like to do, I know I've been attending all of them, but at least formally, academic achievement, I think. But I don't wanna chair that one.
So I guess, but I would be willing to. Question would be.
Academic achievement, if you, Carrie, don't want so many responsibilities.
If we want to do a certain committee, is it the individual committee that decides what is best to meet and how to meet and all that?
We'll, we'll have to post the meetings because all of them are considered committee of the whole. So if you decide as a committee, you know, so for example, Mike is Chair of the Finance and Tony's on Finance. And Chuck says, well, I like to be on Finance, okay, so the three of them are gonna get together. And they're gonna say, when can you meet and when can you come to a meeting? We in the past have had board members who said, I don't have the time to participate in committees. We've had board members who have gone their entire tenure without participating in committees, it's not a mandatory requirement. If you want to participate in a committee, then it's up to the group, the, the groups that are there to figure out when they're gonna meet. And usually I'm attending most of the meetings, Rod is attending academic achievement. We find a time that works um, for most people and then we have to post those meetings because of the fact that technically, we've gone to the model of, uh, you know, committee of the whole, which means you're not required to go to every one of the committee meetings, but you could go to all the committee meetings and it not be a violation of the Open Meetings Act. So that's why we have that process in there, so.
Well, I'm a policy nerd, but I have some.
You are acknowledged here.
I'm sorry.
Hi, it's time, I said I'm a policy nerd.
Did you say policy?
Yeah. So are you, are you interested? I'm interested, it's time, that would be my only kicker.
It's usually once a month, per hour.
Where are they conducted at?
I didn't hear you, Chuck, asking.
No, I, I don't. If it was that Hank and Don's or Jan's. Finance could meet up there.
I'll go on finance with these guys, everybody's gotta put in their, their, their duties, I think, so, I mean, yeah.
So right now, I have building in sight, Mike, Tony and Brian, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
And Tony, you chaired it last time.
I tried to.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay. Policy, I have Brian and Jessica for now.
I thought Alicia.
Alicia, yeah. You were interested though, right? Sort of kinda.
You don't have to.
You don't have to be official if you don't want, you can still attend, okay.
Okay.
And then academic achievement, I have Jessica. Uh, finance, I have, um, Mike and Chuck? Anybody else?
And Tony.
And Tony?
You don't have any, yeah, madam president.
Oh, no, I was going to add myself.
Oh, okay.
So, I like policy too. Will that create a problem if we have four people that are officially on the committee?
Oh.
Cause we have a committee of the whole.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I do like academic achievement, no offense, gentlemen. But, um, you do such a fine job on building in sight, um, and finance, you got this, Mike. So, do we have anybody else that's interested in academic achievement? I know Mike, you, you said.
I tried to make law, so.
Do you wanna be on that?
Sure, you can put me on there.
Okay, well, it goes against your seventy-five percent. Okay, so, um, I'll go through it again. Building in sight, Mike, Tony, Brian, official members with Chair, Tony. Policy, Brian, Jessica, Alicia and myself. Um, do we have somebody who wants to chair the pol- you don't wanna be on policy?
I thought you said not official.
Said she may not officially.
Okay, so I'll take your name off. I'd like to chair the policy committee.
Yes.
Chair the policy committee.
I don't know what I'm doing yet.
I'll chair.
Brian, okay.
Brian, Alicia.
Okay, um, academic achievement, we have Jessica, myself and Mike. I'll chair, I'll chair. I've done it for a little while.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
And Finance, we have Mike, I'm assuming is the Chair, and then Chuck and Tony as members. Did I miss anything or anybody? No?
Nope.
Okay. Well, that was really easy, I remember when we have to take everybody's names and preferences and times and that was too easy. So now the challenge will be the committees deciding when people are available.
Yep, so each committee chair, all I would ask is that you coordinate with me and decide when, you know, your group of three people can meet and then get with me so that we can just coordinate logistics. Sometimes you require school personnel to be at these meetings. Which isn't a problem, I can be here, you know, if it's at night or whatever, but there are also times where we might have, for example, academic achievement where we have teachers or other people coming in, it's more challenging to get them if it's an evening time slot, so. If you've, if you've got people who have volunteered there, it just needs to be able to work around their schedule. One thing that did work really well, if it's possible to coordinate it, is stacking up committees. So if we have people who are on a couple different ones, if we can do them back to back, it makes it so that it's not taking multiple days out of someone's month, so.
I'd like to see the finance and building in sight-
Just like we did last year.
Continue like we did on Monday at three and four, can you make Monday at three and four?
I think so, I'll make arrangements as a once a month.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll change my schedule to accommodate you guys or whatever we need to do.
Great.
What, do they have to be in person physically in this room every time?
Um, yes, you, in turn, are you asking, can you like Skype in?
Like a virtual meeting?
Yeah, so we actually, interestingly enough, have this in the, have this in the policy. So this is a part of the conversation you're gonna be reading about in there is, can a board member participate remotely? And so that's gonna be actually a decision, but currently the decision is no, so you have to be here in person.
So for, for official board meetings, we cannot do that.
Correct.
However, I think it's up to us whether we do that based on this policy.
On committee meetings, is that, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
On the subcommittee.
Yeah, if somebody can't make it and it's got something important, they can remote from their office, that sounds, that's a good idea.
We're not making recommendations, they're making recommendations or reviewing information, so.
Yep.
So we need to work on Rod for academic achievements, you for-
Most of the others.
Policy.
And then, the only last thing here, and, and this should be quick, we, we do have a Genesee County Association of School Board Members. They were, they ask us every year to select a liaison and alternate.
I see them right here.
Is it a state one?
Are you wanting to do that again?
No.
I'm second.
I did it over years and years and years.
I thought we-
I'm kinda interested in that one.
Was it state?
I think you'd be great at it, doesn't it?
What's that? No, that's for the-
Yeah, Alicia.
Well, we did an M A S B, Delia and alternate, but I thought we did this, maybe the years just go by so quickly.
Yeah.
For the Genesee County, no, what it was is, I think while you were there, I asked and they said you were, oh, 'cause we got invited, it was the reception at M A S B. 'Cause I didn't even know that they existed and you were the, you were the representative, right? But, and then we got, we all got to be a bit-
I used to be the representative, yes. But it's an important position and they meet once a month and a lot of good information that you can bring back to the, you know, the board here.
And we can actually put a report in.
Anybody interested? Okay, Jessica. Who would like to back Jessica up?
Brian.
No. I, I've done it for years and it was good.
It's an evening meeting, in fact, there's information about one tomorrow night at six o'clock. But this is the, this is the general meeting.
Yeah.
At least it'll need some experience.
Say Alicia needs some experience? I say you can have a lot more of the afternoon.
As the alternate.
As an alternate.
Yeah, you don't have to.
It's a good, you can be there.
Okay, great. Brian, they get their, they get their meeting information how?
Uh, they'll send it to you, they'll send all you there.
They'll email it.
Yeah, it's all emailed.
Is it at G N C, what do you do?
This one, yeah, over at the Erwin Davis Educational Center. Okay. Any other comments? We're good? All right, going on, we have board action items, John explained. This is the election of officers, as past president, I will conduct the election. I will open the floor for nominations for President. We will, whoever's nominated first and gets four votes, then we move on to Vice President, and we'll do sec, the Secretary and then the Treasurer.
I nominate Carrie for President.
Second.
Okay.
So Joanne, we need to do a roll call vote.
Yep. Okay. Chuck, we-
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And Alicia?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much, moving on, we have Vice President, I would open the floor for nominations.
Nominate Brian Tannen?
Tony Paul.
Okay.
I'll do it.
For Vice President?
Oh wait.
For Vice President?
Vice President.
Vice President, yeah.
Okay, so you nominated Brian, so we will, yes.
You start with Brian.
Start with Brian.
Yep.
And whoever gets four votes, so then if Brian has four votes, we're done.
You won't go in for that one?
Can I change that?
Well, I thought, yeah. You can change that.
Can I change it?
Did you wanna withdraw your nomination?
I'd like to withdraw it and change it to Brian Tannen.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
Second.
All right, so we have Jessica, Brian, second, Mike, so would you like to do a roll call please? Okay. Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Um, Alicia?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And Carrie?
Carrie. Here, time's up.
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, Brian.
Well, my first action as Vice President. I'm not sure what we do here.
Okay, now we have Secretary, I would entertain a motion for nomination.
Tony Paul.
Tony Paul.
Second.
So we have Mike and Jessica, and Tony, and could you do a roll call please, Joanne?
Sure.
Chuck?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
And Jessica?
Yes.
And Carrie?
Carrie.
Carrie. Yes. All right, and finally, we have Treasurer, entertain a motion for Treasurer.
I nominate, nominate Mike Eber for second.
Okay, Brian and Tony and Joanne, could you do a roll call please?
Sure.
Brian?
Yes.
Chuck?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Tony?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Alicia?
Yes.
Okay. Are we good?
Yep.
All right, congratulations to all of you and thank you for the support and I am really looking forward to working with every one of you. If you are not an officer, you are a very important component of this, this board and I know that two of you are new, you're not new to government, Chuck, and you're not new to the community, Alicia, but, and, oh, you, I feel like you've been around forever, Justin.
That's a good thing, it's a good thing.
I was gonna say, that new career doesn't last that long.
Yeah, it's, I, I hope that we're going to be a very strong governance team and we have Ben and, and Rod to support us as well, so, thank you very much. All right, next we have our Board of Education, uh, meeting dates and we've reviewed those and I would entertain a motion for approval.
So move.
Second, Brian and Alicia, any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, follow up to our board committee selection conversation. I won't read them all again, I would entertain a motion to approve the board committees and chairs as discussed.
So move.
Tony?
Support.
Mike, any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Genesee County Association of School Board Members liaison and alternate. As discussed, we have Jessica who's volunteered to be the representative and Alicia as her alternate and I would entertain a motion as such.
So move.
Support.
Brian, Tony, any comments or questions? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you ladies for allowing me in. Okay, now we have the opportunity to receive comments from the public, if you would like to address the board, please stand and state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Dewayne Dennings, Van Leeuwen Road. First thing I wanna do is say Happy New Year to everyone on the board. I also want to welcome Ms. Gardner. Mr. Milkie.
May he sir.
And Mr. Sipin, welcome. Uh, my concerns are, were, one of them was just addressed, the website, I'm on them all the time. And the website needed to be updated, tonight's meeting, it, the date was on there, but there was so much other stuff. On this page on the website, it needs to be updated. We are coming into a time where we all have one of these and we're all connected, okay? This is your voice, our voice, my voice to the public, needs to be updated all the time, needs to be current. Okay? So you have addressed that, I was very happy with watching you address the updating, the meetings, but they need to be put online so that I can see when they're gonna be. The other thing, I was surfing and I was looking for a sporting event that was Schwartz Creek. I wanted to know what time this event took place and I wanted to know who their opponent was. And I come across a website and I, I know you can't see it, but this website is called Schwartz Creek Athletics. On the front page, it says under construction, this has been there, this under construction has been there since twenty seventeen. Okay, I went to SchwartzCreek.org and I tried to find a link that goes to this website. There isn't, the only thing that I was able to find was going to the sporting, I don't know, it's a Michigan Athletic Association and finding sporting events, the date and time on that site is a big hassle. Now, this site was very easy to use, I was happy with it. I went on Facebook and told people about this site because the school district didn't tell me about this site. So a staff member replied to me and said, this is not our site. This, our site, you go to the sports section, you click on this link, I wanted to say, yeah, I know that. Don't like it, it's not easy, okay, we just give the school forty-eight million dollars and we're investing in our sports system. So if we want to get any kickback and return on our sports, then we have to let people know when the football game is, where it is. We have to let them know where the wrestling team is meeting, I'm a wrestling fan. It has been very difficult for me to find out who Schwartz Creek is wrestling on Saturday until this site. Now, my question to you is, is this our site? Because if this, when I say our, I'm saying Schwartz Creek Schools, because if this is not our site, they're using our logos and there is advertising on here, okay? You may wanna look into this if it's not our site, if it is our site, let's tie it together. Have the school site promote this because the information that's presented on this website is very useful. It, it's very useful and we need to promote this site if it's ours, if it's not, we need our graphics, our logos, our, all of our stuff needs to be taken off. But that's something for somebody else to deal with because all the ownership is hidden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dennings.
I would like to welcome our new board members, our old board members, just remember that if you do-
Oh, yeah, my name is Chris.
Sorry. I just assumed everybody knew who I was. Um, but just remember that if you're good to your community, your community will be good to you. One thing that I have for Ben, I know it's new in the discussion, um, the integrating buildings. We need to make sure that we don't have fiascos like we've had in the past of talking about doing changes with our school. Change is good in some aspects, but we need to make sure that, you know, people are heard. Every avenue is covered as far as if you're going to take hypothetically DEE and Cyrene and combine them. How are you transporting those children? What, you know, make sure that everything is covered, so that way there you're not saying, well, I could do this, no, 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 we need to know what you're going to do.
Absolutely.
What could be done.
Great.
And the bid package for the bond, will those be, be made public?
Yes, yep, so what will happen is as a package is presented, the entire package gets presented to the board and they'll be, that'll be in the minutes and there will have, there will be different, all of the different contractors that, that put in for the bid. It's done, it can be attended technically, there's a public opening, the, there's usually not people from the public that go to those other than the people that are the contractors themselves, they usually attend. So that's usually specified and so it's posted. It's also, there's a website called Sigma, which is where all of the state bids for construction are usually housed and so they put those things out there and then they come through, so.
Perfect. Can I ask you to do a follow-up? Kristen, why not?
Of course.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Kristen. Anybody else? Do you have anybody else? Okay. All right, moving on, comments and questions from the board? Anybody?
Yeah, looking forward to this year. Got a good year, busy year.
I'm excited about this year, I, I feel the spirit of this room is very uplifting and I think we're gonna do some great things, I know we are.
As a new board member, I'd like to thank the community at large, my family specifically and friends that supported me, this board as well, that supported me through my efforts and I look forward to the future. I would like to address Mr. Dennings and just comment that as a mom, I also appreciate your frustration, it is difficult. I will say coaches even have difficulty following their own schedules and getting that information out, so I, I do think it is hard, but needs to be evaluated and somehow integrating the various systems that we do have, there are different apps, there are different calendars, there are different websites and I think just somehow streamlining that as best as possible, I just, I just want you to know, your, your concern is heard and I do think we need to look into it a little bit further. It's hard to find information sometimes.
All right, anybody else?
Welcome Chuck and Alicia to the board. Look forward to work the more.
Thank you for the warm welcome.
Yeah.
Yes, well, it's gonna be fun.
Welcome back, Brian.
Welcome back, Brian.
Okay, all right. Uh, thanks to everybody. Uh, I want to make sure that we, um, recognize the work of Gabriella and her family and thanks for sharing that video. Also want to thank Jeremy and, um, Michelle and Kevin for coming in to talk to us. Exciting stuff. I know it's just the beginnings, but it's nice to know that we are out in front, just like we tend to be. And that's due to your leadership and your team's leadership. Um, and did I miss anybody? I don't think so, but thank you. Thanks to all of you for your time. It's not nine o'clock, that's a really good thing. And so with that, I will adjourn.
Brian, you want to go? No, I got to sort of. I'm like, I got something tomorrow. I was like, wait, no, I don't have anything.
Oh, no. And I had it somewhere.
We should, gotta make me a sunshine.
I know, I know.
We can send you.
Okay.
So. So just touch me or you can tap me to remind me and I'll send you a little bit of value.
It takes forever to rap, but it'll take a lot of work.
Because I, I am going.
I know.
Oh, tomorrow? I've got a funeral. We had a party here for a dollar, forty-nine, you really have to wait.
Really?